Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All rise for a pledge of allegiance.
There you go.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two republics, the four nations, one nation, and God is the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone and happy new year. This is our first meeting of the year, right? Of course, it's cold out there, chilly. The first thing having the agenda are the homeowners associations. Brayburn West, Margie Bell or anyone from, Dr. Jamil. Anyone here from Brayburn West, Margie Bell? Or Sherman Pines Valley? Anyone here from Sherman Pines Valley? Or online, Lanis Kuzin? All right? If not, then we are gonna move to public comment. Anyone have any public comment? Please.
I just wanted to put a face for the name. I sent some information to the board and my name is Mark Rains. And it's just some ideas about possibility of connectivity and safe access. I'm not gonna do a presentation during that. I know there's no time for that. I just wanted to kind of put a face for the name and throw the idea out there. I know that there's a, I understand a pathways project that will lead to different things. Or some connectivity and more towards the western edge than I'm talking about the subdivisions or other streets around there. I'm just trying to get some connectivity with downtown so that there's a safe access point to get here instead of having to drive out on 53. So just threw some ideas out there. I don't know what thoughts were, again, not now, but just to put the name out. My background, I've lived here for about four years now. I used to live in Cary. I was president of our homeowners association, 215 Senior Family Home Subdivision. So it's kind of the work abilities. I'm no expert on any of these things, but I'm happy to jump in and help out if it's ever needed or helpful.
Do you still have a pathway committee going?
I do. I live west of you and I feel your pain.
I run point on finance and my dream is that we have pathways that connect Long Grove west to east and north to south.
Yeah. And that's where I kind of look at the ones that from other areas that run along a major road. Like one runs along 22, one runs along Lake Cook Road. Or that was possible through easements along Route 53 to do something similar with brick or pavement, whatever, just to connect the western areas to downtown. Show it up in businesses in the summertime, too.
Absolutely.
Walking in white.
You would be happy to know that we're gonna have a sidewalk on 22. Whenever they decide to widen it, not up to us, up to the powers that be, but there will be a sidewalk on the south side. Jeff knows what, probably the west side, but with a guardrail. That's in the future, whenever they widen it. The problem, there are several problems. One is money. If we had a pathway from downtown to 22, it would be over a million dollars. And along 053, there would have to be a guardrail and then the terrain just really isn't conducive. And I don't, I'm not sure Jeff would know more than I do that I believe I got only X number of feet from the edge of the road. You know, and then all the rest, all the rest of the D shape covers kind of thing.
So I didn't know what was what there.
If we could, if we could get pathways between homes that
That would be fantastic.
Connect, you know, somewhere back there. Yeah, that would be fabulous.
I knew that that would private suffer because you'd have to get access from private homeowners probably to give access.
Yeah, but yes, we would. And there would, there's always
It would be great if that would happen.
It would be, it would be if everybody thought the same.
I understand.
It could happen. It could happen.
Okay.
Mark, yeah, thanks for putting the face to the name and coming in today. Appreciate it. Yeah, we saw your note over the weekend, so thank you.
Jeff is gonna talk about more pathways.
Okay, Jeff's gonna talk about pathways this evening. Okay.
Aren't you?
He did not know that, but he is. Other public comment? Benjamin?
I'm Benjamin Askey from 4369, the Village. My question is about like the 4369, 22 application. Specifically, my group would like to know how things are coming along with the review. Secondly, after review of the application, we have definitely concerns about the normal which is not getting these out. But our concern is the village attorney gives very specific roadmap on what they're supposed to do. So if part of their application review, will the village attorney be making sure that everything is following what he laid out? How exactly does the process on board and what's the timeline before they appear to the PC? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's still under internal staff review. It will be reviewed in, with all of our department heads. So the village engineer, village planner, and village attorney, Vic. And then once it gets through staff review, there might be more back and forth for more information to complete the application. Don't know that yet. Once we have a complete application that's been reviewed, the public hearing that was continued will be scheduled and we'll notice it like we usually do for these things and send mailings out and the like. So I wouldn't picture it going before the plan commission for at least a month or more.
Are you all still reviewing the application as we
Yeah, yeah, it's still being reviewed.
And do you have a timeline on when your review will happen or are you still determining their state?
Still determining that. We have a lot of projects and only one planner, so it's taking time to get that done.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Mike?
Mike Martin.
I'm Mr. Fuffle Creek, right. Wanted to find out if you guys had any steps up yet on the situation we're having with the historic downtown Long Grove Business Association where they changed their dates and we have events scheduled on those dates.
Yeah, I mean, all we have is the feedback we have is what we talked about last Friday is that they've offered to close off half the parking lot for you and to manage entry to it. But beyond that, they have not changed their position on changing the dates of Strawberry Fest.
You guys haven't decided to approve anything yet?
We have not approved anything yet either.
So what about the fact that they are publishing all this information and these updates?
Yeah, I, obviously, those are unapproved right now, so, yeah.
So is there a plan to, with the board, to discuss this and actually legislate, figure out what we're doing with this?
I think that's what we have to figure out. We're not there yet, so, yeah.
I just saw the email like two hours ago.
Yeah.
Because this is very concerning of our wedding party and they're willing to join us on a lawsuit with this company.
How is this going to be resolved? Who's gonna
Oh, I'm sorry, Bobby.
Who's gonna resolve it and how are they gonna do?
Yeah, well, I mean, in reality here, Bobby, we're, it's gotta be resolved between the HDLGBA and Mike, right? So, so, but, you know, obviously, we can, you know, talk about it, see if there's anything else we can do. But we've been wrestling with it for a while.
Oh, I didn't know about it until an hour or two ago when I read that.
Yeah.
This has been going on since September when we found out that they changed their dates.
Oh.
Mike, what's the threatened litigation? Who against who?
They keep changing the dates on, right? And because of that, we have lost countless thousands of hours, not only in events that we signed for those dates, but also all the ones that we've turned away for dates that we didn't sign because we thought those were the proper states. And so at this point, the lawsuit will be against the HDLGBA and anyone else that approves. The time is right. This is the realistic scenario. We lie on the published or the stated business meeting minutes of the organization. Immediately take those, put them into our calendars so that they're still the dates. Are looking at that during those dates? And then with no notification, all of a sudden, the dates are changed. We had rehearsal dinner last year and they're trying to tell me that, well, we've always been on the third weekend of May, the fourth weekend of June, fourth weekend of September. Last year, they changed the dates for September, third weekend, and also they said we might have a person there. We had to apologize for it, refund them all their money, and they had to go send it out. We were like, say, wedding by our memorial day for this year because they couldn't get their activity. And we have a 200-person wedding on Saturday. And they already started the dates. It's starting, you know. Talking to Corning and bringing 200 people in for the festival somehow and having very close to the public.
Understood. Thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Mike Gunn is having those congratulations on your big awards.
Thank you.
Saw that in the paper. That's quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. There's, we've actually been handing over beers into these awards lately and we picked up three last year and then just picked up the three that are gonna be announced during the World Beer Championships.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment?
Do you have any stickers? I had to get a new laptop and so my too tall sticker, my too tall sticker is gone because my old laptop.
We got stickers.
Oh, God.
Do you have a collection?
Somewhere.
I still have a couple of those very little.
It's the too tall one that I had for a while.
So could you just clarify for me then? We are not part of this solution or resolution or
Well, the only thing, so the
And do what they do.
So now, I mean, so the only thing is what we've been trying to do is work with the HDLGBA. We've been talking to Mike to make them aware of this issue. I think you first brought this up in October, right?
Well, the first, first time that this was brought up was actually February of last year when they changed the dates without any notification for it was
Yeah.
And then it was brought up again when we were trying to close the deal on the memorial, the 2025 Memorial Day wedding. And now it's been brought up again because they changed all three dates for 2025. They changed all three. The only one I really care about at this point is the Strawberry Fest date that they had published for the weekend before, which was in the 20s versus the weekend of the 20s. Like I said, we have a wedding that 200 people, they signed up for an experience. Just having a festival going on at the same time is not the experience they signed up for.
And the reason why we haven't put it on the agenda, normally it would be like this one, it could be the next one, is this is not resolved, so we didn't put it on the agenda, hoping that there's a solution here. Don't know what that is yet.
Mike, are you the only vendor that needs to schedule around these things? I mean, there must be
When I was actually on the board and president, Anzo Lachias had actually booked a wedding, I remember, during Eglise. And I was booking events two years in advance. Pretty soon, the new season was opening up and they are booking events two years in advance. And then, well, Brothers Field does it and then also with the new modifications to the program, they are actually now, I talked to Greg about it, and they're scheduling events out more than a year in advance as well. So this affects the entire downtown that when the board decides that they're just gonna publish dates and then not follow through with them, it affects all the businesses.
Thank you.
When I was president, I saw this as an issue and then at that point, we started publishing dates two years in advance.
Trusty Jamil, you've got a light on that's right in my eye.
Your flashlight on.
It's mine.
Oh, your flashlight on.
My eye.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I appreciate you coming here and bringing it up to the full board.
So is part of our takeaway in the future, should we consider putting deadlines on for events like further out in advance? Instead of like being as close to the 2025 schedule, shouldn't we already be looking at locking in the 26 schedule? And saying, hey, our policy is if you're gonna have a 26 festival, meet it by March 1st or something like that, should be
We are, we're actually looking to three years in advance.
I would think the three years, the three years. More things, and if we want more experiences, more
And not be allowed to change it.
Exactly. Just lock the mode so that
But do they, do they get jammed up with certain, like the amusement people not being able to accommodate? You know, we thought, they thought they had this stage. Is there a jam up on, you would know, Mike, is there, is that a
My understanding is they're not supposed to book anything until the dates have been approved by
I see.
And if they've launched or had already done that, then that's their issue, not everyone's.
I see.
It needs a little bit more participants. That's the issue about the contract.
So are you, is a way for them to work this out or are you monitoring or are you
We're all involved.
Our, our task is solved. They came back, the first wish made was for us to have a 200-person wedding party. Have eight spots in front of the brewery, four spots over at the church, six spots over at the memory and care center. How do you tell, if Brian Grum, you have to divide your guests up and go, and these people are here, here, and that still doesn't cover all of your guests? You just can't do that. And then they say, well, yes, you paid for this, but now you can't have a wedding here. And they are not happy about this.
Has anybody considered
Good day's time, I'm sorry, for a wedding party. Change. The wedding date.
And this is what the party
Pretty tears.
Yes, and they, July of last year.
Yeah. Has anybody considered a mediator? Outside mediator, arbiter?
No, we, we, the mediator will need a quick time charter.
Well, the other one might be less expensive.
Because we've lost thousands of dollars. If we have to go to court, we're going for the, we're doing the whole thing.
I'm just thinking that time wise, an arbitra, a professional arbiter might be quicker, cheaper.
We've already retained an attorney and we already spent a lot of money with them. And this is actually a breach of contract issue.
For sure. I get, I get it.
All right, Mike, thanks for the comments. Any other public comment? If not, we'll keep us moving. And we don't have anyone from Lake County Sheriff Police with us tonight. Lieutenant Kaiser is not here. We do have two items on the consent agenda, approval of the December 2024 bill warrant, and approval of the regular board meeting minutes from December 10th of last year, subject to non-sustantative revisions. Any comments, questions, or does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Trusty Barowski.
Second.
Seconded by Trusty Chris Meyer. That would be a roll call because it's money. Trusty Barowski.
Aye.
Trusty Chris Meyer.
Yeah, aye.
Trusty Jamil.
Dentist today.
You don't have to approve the minutes, but you can if you want, so. Sorry? He's abstaining. Trusty O'Connor.
Aye.
Trusty O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trusty Tanucci.
Aye.
Motion carried? Thank you. Okay. The moment you've been waiting for, we're gonna talk trash tonight. Consideration and approval of a resolution warning that Village of Long Grove residential, residential single ways hauler contract to Groot recycling services. So lots to probably unpack here. So I'm gonna turn it over to you. I mean, well, let me just start it. What happened was is the contract was for five years and I, and it was, I want to say like November, we were starting to talk about how successful the recycling was with the, you know, our tonnage is going way up and everything and just the thought dawned on me that, you know, with the changes in all the managers, so is anyone looking at when the contract expires? So I sure enough and look and it expired like in five months. So that's put us in motion to go out and figure out what to do. And it was, you know, this is Trusty Barowski's oversight and they decided to go out to RFP. And so we were surprised by the pricing we got back and we were also surprised by the fact that waste management, who we've been with for so long, was, you know, really increasing significantly their rates. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chris, let you explain what we got back and where we're at, and I'll stop here. Take over.
So, yeah, we went to RFP and we ended up with three submitters. We had Waste Management, LRS, and Groot. A wide range of price results came back and I can give percentages. So from the current rates, and I'll start with unlimited service, 84% of our residents use unlimited service. The Waste Management came back with a 29% increase, which is a little less than what Mike said he was gonna do, but very high. LRS came in at 4% increase from our current rates and Groot came in with a 31% decrease. So they were very competitive. And Josh Mulner of Groot is here tonight to answer any questions that we have as we get going on this. So, yeah, I mean, you guys had a chance to look at the memo. I don't know if there's any specific questions. We just wanna start with the, a big thing is the garbage day would change. It would go from Wednesdays to Mondays. The annual rate increase jump, it's 3.75% now with Waste. It would go up to 5% annually. And in Waste Management's bid, they also proposed a 5% increase going forward, too. So patches with that. And other than that, I can
Magic about 5%? Would that come from
I don't know. Inflation, inflation costs a bit
The union agreement is my guess because they have to negotiate with the union workers collectively and that's been kind of in that range, I guess, maybe. Is that right, Josh?
Actually, that's actually lower than what we're seeing on the union contract. More so the cost of doing business, what we've seen over the last five years, we're projecting. Probably that with an upfront number, that's what we're using to kind of keep
What if due to whatever, half a percent looks good? For example? I dread, I really agree that there's no provision for benchmarks or any, anything on the downward side. It's just an automatic 5% increase. I mean, what if y'all get all electric trucks?
So one thing, though, we had in our contract, because I read the whole thing and discovered all the mistakes in the memo, we had a 3.75% annual increase. So every year, it was going up 3.75%. So just, you know, that was in our current contract. With Waste Management.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying that even the mortgage market, you know, if you have a just low rate loan, there's a benchmark by which to measure whether it's automatic and
Right. I'm just saying we had it before, though. That's all.
What I'm saying is worldwide, interest rates go back where they were or lower.
Right.
Why aren't we paying 5% more? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Just ask.
I'll just observe that in this case, 5% represents a dollar and a few pennies per month. And if it was 3.75% instead, it would be like a 20 cent difference per month. So we're not talking a lot of money.
That's not the point. I think it's a principle. That's not the point. I get it. When you add all that together, it's the numbers that are bigger.
I was gonna spend arguing about 20 cents.
I'm just asking.
Well, the question is, yeah, do you index it to something and then which is, which is the greater risk? Having a flat rate regardless of where inflation goes or having it indexed to something and then it floating, the increase is floating based on that index is what you're saying, right?
Right. If there's deflation, there's, there's no accommodation for that. There is one for inflation. I get it. I understand. I'm just asking if it was explored, that's all.
Yeah.
And with, with the 5% increase, it will take nine years before it gets back to our current rate that everyone's paying now.
Okay.
But, yeah.
If you can, if it's short, because we, yeah, we're just getting going.
There's a really difference between like one ways pickup between them or electronic pickup, one to your type of thing? Are those any differences in the contracts? I mean, go through the contracts, that's why we asked.
No, so actually, that's a good discussion for the board, too. Why don't you wanna talk about it? So they have the landscape waste service. It's similar, right?
Yep, we have
And they have the electronic pickup, right?
Yep.
The food truck.
One to one that's involved, right?
Yeah, so it's very similar. And so here's the other thing, too. The other thing is if I understand it, Chris, I'm not gonna paraphrase it for you, but my question's with you. We gave Groot our Waste Management contract and said, here's what we have now as the basis for the service that we're looking for, because we had, you know, pretty good service. So for the most part, there should have been a red line document in there that talks about the deviations, but it's very, very similar.
Yes, our contract is the baseline. It's what was used for the RFP document and it's what we asked Josh's team to red line up to mark any changes. And we're to the point now where we're fiddling over words over with the lawyers. So we're nearly there and it's all minor changes.
I do have one issue, though, I'll just head it on, because I think as I went through this over the weekend and I had to pull my bill out because I couldn't get to, is it this amount per month? Is it, and I couldn't get to it multiplied by three, multiplied by four. The dollar amount hadn't been upticked with the 3.75% increase every year, so I couldn't get to the math. But there was a clause in the contract that had, so everything looks good, right? Price is wonderful. But then there was this clause and it was item, what's the item? It was item, here it is. It was under the compensation section. It was item 5.1. And it talked about, it said, notwithstanding anything herein to the contractor, contractor may pass through and the customer shall pay to the contractor any documented increase in disposal fees, increases in the contractor's costs due to newly imposed taxes, fees or other governmental charges assessed against or passed through to the contractor other than income or property or taxes. And I just go, what is that?
That's my second question.
What is that? Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder. So I know, I called it out. So I wanted to be proactive about it because I'm like, talk about a loophole. You know, that's, I mean, here we're saving all this money, but then, okay, 5% per year, but oh, no, our costs went up and now we're higher than Waste Management, because it's not in our Waste Management agreement.
It's a vulnerability, you know.
Yeah.
Is it probable? Is it possible?
Yeah, it's possible. Yeah, it's possible. So
It's a big door.
It's a very big door. Yeah, yeah. So Vic or somebody, because that's the one that, and I got all worried about that, so.
Yeah, I know, we're going back and forth cleaning up that particular section in particular. Vic, I don't know if you wanna chime in from the legal side on this at all?
Yeah, I think that as to the particular provision, it largely matches what we have with Waste Management. The big issue is the disposal fees. And that's something that is still under discussion with, with Groot. I think that, you know, I have seen other contracts that have provisions regarding that, but those are also contracts where it is a, an independent hauler that doesn't have the disposal facility as well. And so that's, as I understand it, not the case with Groot.
Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, so the intent behind this clause isn't to allow us to increase rates off of the cost of doing business. It's only a result of legislation, local, state, federal, that would increase it. So regarding disposal, if, say, for example, the state of Illinois wanted to put on a $5 per ton tax, something we would have no control over, that's something we would have accounted for in our original performance or our original rate. So as far as it goes, that clause, the intent isn't to cover our cost of doing business. That's on us, those are the risks we take on. That's a risk we cover under that 5% increase. We can't increase beyond that. This is specifically for those situations where there's an increase in cost through the legislature.
I think to the extent that we are talking about what I will call uncontrolled impositions of costs, such as taxes and the like, that is a pretty common provision. The way that it was presented in the draft from Groot, it says simply disposal fees, which is an operating cost. And that's where we have had some concern about how that was addressed. To the extent that, I presume that was Josh who was just talking, to the extent that that was intended only to be reflective of those increases in disposal fees because of governmental impositions, then I think we can of governmental impositions, then I think we can get to a, an acceptable resolution on that provision.
If you go down, there's a lot of comments in that sentence. If you go down the line, it does say as a result of local, state, federal. But if you want to reword that and make that more clear, we're open to that again. The intent of that isn't to cover random costs of doing business like year to year. It's to cover legislative movement. We have no control.
That sounds like it can get fixed in order.
Yeah, and, and that's where we, I, I believe that, that Bob Pickrell had communicated with, with Groot's attorney about this. And I think that that's more or less the understanding that came out of that conversation, but we haven't yet gotten the, the language hammered out.
Hey, so, so, we're going to keep it here, Benjamin, I'll come back to you. But, you know, so, you know, this is interesting because we're very satisfied with the service from Waste Management. Right, well, you know, looking at former trustee Yeager, right? We were all part of that decision a number of years ago to do this. But it's, and I, and I think of Mayor Belandick and I think of myself. And, you know, he got lost to Jane Byrne because of snow. You know, no one wants to lose, you know, none of us want to lose our positions because of trash. So this is a pretty big switch to, to move from one company to another. All the, I mean, I don't know, can you get all the trash cans? How many there, does there have to be? 5,000 trash cans that have to be replaced? I don't know what the, if you did the count, I was, you know, whatever it is, but.
1500, I'll still call it two per.
Yeah, so whatever that number actually ends up being, some, yeah, some have two, some have three, they all have to be replaced. So how do we do all that? I don't know what your plan was for that.
So, I mean, we've done a lot of transitions over the last five, seven years since we've been ramped up into the company for whatever reason to move away from the residential side of this business. It's been an opportunity for us. We already have a very dense, you know, municipal customer base within the area. We own transfer stations, we have our own landfill. So the infrastructure incentivizes us to continue to really expand our footprint here. So, so we've had a lot of experience over the last five, seven years in particular. But usually how this goes down, if all goes well, is we do a joint letter at least, you know, a month and a half, two months ahead, ahead of time. We send out a brochure about three weeks before we start letting carts go, or start delivering carts. We usually start delivering carts two weeks before the start date. That allows us enough time to go through, get all deliveries in, go back for any changes that need to be made. Because we'd rather have a cart in there too early rather than too late. So in terms of that strategy, it's worked out pretty well in the past. We usually try to work with the unwilling hauler on that. We can't pick up their, their carts for them, but we've taken over plenty of Waste Management contracts. I know Mike has always done a good job at taking care of their carts, so.
But, but how can you, so, I mean, are they coming from China? I mean, where are those carts coming from?
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin. So they can, they can make these carts?
I've already, I've already got what we call a ghost order with our manufacturer. I'm, I'm ready to rock and roll, for lack of a better term. In terms of personnel and trucks, I already have that in place, which is why this really worked out in terms of timing and the personnel and the truck that we have. It was just really, really good timing and that's why you see the disparity reflected in the rates.
Yeah, but you can get the cans. No problem. You can get them.
No supply chain issues?
Nope.
Okay.
We still have a can. I mean, they wouldn't take our cans, canes. Waste wouldn't take our cans until we had our new ones.
We hope not.
We hope not. It would be a problem if they did.
Oh, they can't. They're, they're contractually obligated to the end of March, so they can't do anything.
No, but I just meant we, if we said tonight, we said we want to do it, this starts the whole thing in motion and is there enough time to get it all done? All the stuff and people's credit and everything else. I mean, I, I, you know, I don't, I thought there was some language in there, you can't decline anyone, but all, all that jazz. Because everyone's going to have to establish credit with you, right? To get.
What is the alternative?
Pardon?
What is the alternative?
I'm saying right now, you don't have to do anything, but, but the thing is that everyone's going to have to switch. They're going to have to take some action.
No, I understand, but you're, but you're.
Oh, they said they're automatically approved. There's no issues. We want to make sure that everyone has automatically can open up an account. There's no.
We, we have three choices here. Groot is the low one, one is the middle, and stay with Waste Management is a higher one. I'm just saying.
No, I'm calling out the concerns there. We need, not that it's, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm calling out, we have concerns there that we have to work through. Is all that.
Trust me, I won't let my can leave. I'll keep it until they deliver.
If I can give any history with both my subdivision and territory, all of them have very smooth each changeovers when they switch contracts. They were very almost all business changeovers. That was a couple of years ago, but they were seamless. One with Groot, one with Blood.
And I'm sure it will be, but I don't want to be Mayor Belandick.
I just wanted to.
Just so you know.
We were very.
There were two, I'm going to go ahead, yeah.
I have a question about cans.
We, we're trying to discuss the board.
I have a can question too.
Yeah, let's, hold on, just real quick. So George and then Benjamin, real quick.
There are some residents that receive special accommodation on their pickup recycling and they probably put the old totes into their trunk and drive them down the long driveway to the road. I don't know if that's still taking place or not, but.
That's in their contract too.
The back door?
The back door, it's there, it's there. It's there. Yeah, it hasn't, the contract is almost identical, but that's not taken out. I saw it, I read the whole thing. Benjamin, you had a quick question?
My only big question, if we're on a pocket road where Waste Management backs up the truck, where houses at the edge will do a Waste Management, you know, I don't want to drag anything over the 22.
Chris, you've already addressed that, right?
Yeah, I don't know if you guys, if, I'm sure you've driven the routes.
All of our route supervisors have. I can give, I can give the answer to you on that specific route.
Yeah, maintain the current, kind of.
Right. Okay, let's keep it back to the board, yeah.
Can I? Go ahead.
This is a quick question. The contract defaults to a medium sized recycle bin. What if we want a large recycle bin?
We talked about that. It's, it'll be, we can change it.
No, it says every May you can make changes, but upfront, can we say, residents have a large recycle bin instead of getting a medium one and then a month later asking for a big one?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be, I mean, once we get, if it's approved in the contract signed, then that's kind of how we, we're going to have to figure out how we communicate that and those choices. I know we can figure that out to try, I mean, because I would also prefer to have and purchase and deliver the right cart that won't get switched up. So, you know, we have that interest in it. So we just default into a large cart, is that a problem?
We're hoping to get the, the accounting level detail from Waste, which will give us the current sizes and then we'd share that with Groot. And I think we default to the, to the existing can size that people have unless they want to change it when they sign up.
We don't want to shrink the existing can size.
I'm sure Riley has a question.
That was my concern too, because quite honestly, my recycle is fuller than, than my regular.
Same.
And, and so I assume a lot of people are like that. So I want the 95 right away, which I won't let my waste go until. So, that was my question. I have a bunch of other questions. I don't know how you want to.
No, just keep going. I think that's fine. Go ahead and take the floor for a little bit and then anyone else. If Frida has more, we'll go back to, or whoever.
I'm not sure how to phrase this other than to say, what's your percentage of complaints on an annual basis?
Can you complain on that special contract?
In other words, I don't want a new company that all of a sudden want to be causing us a problem, because I don't think Waste does.
But that's the exercise of the village to review. It's not going to happen. Ask the company itself, they must have asked. So it's the exercise of a village that has done before, enacted in the contract. The review should have been looked at, question to the village manager. Do you happen to look at the reviews and complaints anywhere online or to get out any information about this company who's giving this rate?
Yeah, we talked to Walter Willis, who's the executive director of Swelco. In addition, I called Round Lake Beach, who just transitioned, I think it was Beach, and talked to them. Not a lot of, I mean, everyone has complaints. I mean, you're going to have missed pickups that people calling in are upset about. That's just part of doing business, but.
But what part of, what part of their business is, is it 10% where it's Waste with 5? I, I don't know. I don't have a grasp of that, but I want to know going in if there is a cultural problem with the company.
So, I mean, what I can tell you, I don't have a specific stat for you, but, you know, right now we, we service around eight, a little over eight municipal contracts right now, all of them which are referenced. A lot of them we put into our proposal. All of our customer service is local and have, you know, any type of odd speakers throughout the country. We have five locations within this service area and we all have two people that live in any community and work in those. So it's, it's all local. It's the focus of ours. I've never really had an issue on, on any of the contracts we've taken over, even specifically from Waste Management. So that was part of the intent on putting those references in.
Okay, I, I didn't see those references. I'm unaware of that. I do know the number of paragraphs talking about phone calls. And I, and I thought if you're getting a lot of phone calls, it's not a good sign.
That's standard language. I think that was in, in your current contract.
Whatever. That's, that's why I'm asking. So I guess there's not an answer.
Well, I can give you an anecdotal thing. So my son and father-in-law both are in Monmouth, so they use Groot. I know my wife, because my father, father-in-law's a little senior, had an issue with leaving the garbage can kind of knocked down and my wife was worried that he couldn't pick it back up. So it, I don't know if she ever really got a call back, but she did get the issue taken care of it. It's been, the garbage can's been put down, staying level all the time. My son really hasn't had any complaints, but I'll just give, that's the only anecdotal information I have. I asked my wife, how's, you know, how's your dad?
I'll call him if we have a problem.
There you, there you go.
We'll put them on the list to be called if, if there is a problem.
Yeah.
Quick question, it's out of ignorance. I don't know the answer. What the hell is a white good?
Clean.
Washing machine.
The company should have on their website, the customer conflict resolutions per year. Do you have any of that data?
You're saying a company should have?
They should have any data on the customer conflict resolution, how many per year you guys do it, some statistics on that?
Again, I don't know. I don't know those off the top of my head, so I wouldn't be able to tell you tonight. I can tell you we've been operating in this area for, for over 100 years and from, from every contract we've ever taken over, I've never had a single issue on the 18 years that I've been working here. So how we put our reputation up against any contractor in this state.
Will you still do bags first?
No, that's Waste Management, that's Waste Management Service. We don't have that.
That's to be expected.
But that's outside, that's outside, I think the scope of the contract. I think you can still get that service from Waste Management.
Oh, okay, okay. And, and have we approved food scraps?
Food scraps can go into the landscape bags.
I mean, no, but isn't there an approval of, don't we have to approve doing that?
No.
No?
It's in the contract. Lands, uh, food scraps can go right into the landscape bags.
I know that.
Okay.
But there was something in, in there, some wording that led me to believe that, that we have to approve allowing that.
Hey Vic, do you know?
Like the additional bin?
I think, I think that might be maybe the list of a lot of what could go in there. We have the top two.
Hey Vic, you want to pipe in from a legal perspective?
Sure. There are some communities that have traditionally precluded the use of the landscape bags for food scraps. I don't know that our code addresses it specifically or not. And I'll, if you'll give me a moment, I will check and get back to you.
Okay, I have another question. So you go ahead and do, do your thing.
Okay.
Will you, in the course of this transition, be generating a list of all our residents? Our address?
That's actually something requesting of the village. So we have the addresses to deliver to, so.
Have we created that?
Sorry, what was? The list, so we have the address list of everyone that, as a contract. We're supposed to get that from Waste Management.
Right.
Yeah. It's in their contract, they have to supply it to us. Waste Management does.
Right, okay. I, I, I just want to be sure somebody gets it, because I know it wasn't too long ago that we were fighting to get it and, and ultimately went to Waste to get it. Okay. And then this is totally off the wall, I'm going to ask you, and, and that's about commercial service. Do you provide commercials, not within this contract, but commercial service? Because I was surprised to know that our downtown and our other retail areas have their own service. And there may be three or four different trucks coming through and keeping in mind that nothing damages a road like a garbage truck. And if we're doing that, it's counterproductive to not have a contract for commercial enterprise.
So it's a question of the possibility of including commercial in your business?
No, no, separate. Keep it, keep it, keeping it separate. But is that something you could work with us?
Well, in terms of establishing like an actual contract just on the commercial side, technically in the state of Illinois, I'm sure they can speak to this probably more succinctly, but they, they passed something where a village would have to do a three-year study based on participation on recycling. And then if it doesn't hit that threshold, then the village can go out for an RFP on that service to, basically similar to residential franchise on the, on the commercial side. So there is a few hoops the village would have to jump through to get to that.
Three years of studying what?
Well, the main point is, as I've gathered, based on the legislation, is participation level on recycling. So if, I think the state was getting at is if participation recycling is below whatever that acceptable threshold is, then that would give the village a reason or the ability to go out mainly to increase that. So I think it was all hinging on recycle participation amongst the commercial community. And if it was already above a certain threshold, then they wouldn't be allowed to move.
But only for three years? So you, we couldn't go and, and look at what they're doing right now?
Hey Vic, do you have any comment on that, Vic? You're muted.
The, the Illinois statutes have, as, again, I presume that that was Josh, but the Illinois statutes have a, a requirement that unlike residential where you can just go out and make a, a RFP and get some proposals and make a community-wide franchise, to do it for the commercial, you have to go through a much greater process. Part of this was, I think, a result of concerns of commercial businesses being put into the mix of residential and basically subsidizing them. So there, there was a, a push legislatively to separate commercial collections from residential collections insofar as both the contracts and the process. The, the process, as, as Josh was suggesting, requires not only much more data gathering, but also once a determination is made, there's a three-year hiatus before it can even kick in. We have not undertaken that process, which is why all of the commercial buildings within the village have separately contracted and they don't have any obligation to go with Groot or Waste or LRS or anybody else. That's their negotiation to have.
I, I understand that. That also means that the frigging truck is going down the road many, many times every single week. And, and that was my only objection in, in, in pursuing this is to save our roads from intense trucks. But then it is Illinois. So I, I thank you for your explanation and.
Well, that's why we always pave the streets before we put in the underground facilities.
Well, that's also why we repave as often as we do.
That's, that's right. That's why it's Illinois, you know? You pave and then you do the water lines.
Hey Vic, towards that end, is there a way that we could put Groot up as our preferred supplier and publish that to the community and say, hey, commercial guys, if you use Groot? if you use Groot, you know, we appreciate it, or give Groot a first day first?
I, I think we can certainly give information, I don't think that we can advocate for one, uh, you know, one provider from another, but I, I think that, you know, there certainly is, I would expect, some economies of scale if you have basically the same provider, uh, serving everyone or most everyone, and it may be that it's more cost-effective to have, say, Waste do the, the commercial and have Groot do the residential, um, that may not be what I would, uh, expect, but I, I don't know, I've, I've never really seen any data on it.
Actually, I'm going to try and see if I can find out how many are being served by the same company.
I would say actually, you could say, um, changing to Groot, you could say actually we're changing to Groot, the new collection day and for residential.
No, no, that's, that's what I'm, what I'm saying, maybe, maybe forty percent use Waste, maybe twenty percent use Groot, um, and, and see if there is a, a, a logical mix there now, but I'll, I'll drop it for now.
Contract term can differ also, Vic, so their contract term can differ from when we are signing, so the dates can differ inevitably, may not be linked with our contract, arch. This contract doesn't tend, aren't they, they're not...
They all, they, each individual has their own contract.
Did you have a...
No.
Good, um, you had a list, right?
No, I just had those two.
Oh, okay.
We took care of.
Oh, I didn't mean to, you took your list.
No, it's just the same question.
Um, like from you?
Other than what, what the custom service and complaints, the reviewers, for, uh, whether that exercise was diligent to find the village, that has to be seen.
Okay.
Companies, you can keep track of that?
Yeah, there is.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Inhaling my pee.
So we have that open, out of Trustee Chris Meyer, anything?
No, thank you, because I appreciate that all the digging done has already been done on all the trash.
Um, hey, uh, since you do have garbage contract as your oversight, um, what do you think we should do?
I have a question first, how often do your garbage trucks blow up? Somebody had to ask it, sorry, no, that's, that's a facetious question, please don't respond to that.
Depending on...
Um, what do I think we should do? I think we should move forward with the contract and approve it tonight under the provision that we can get the wording looked out on the paragraph that is still in question. Um, cost savings, good cost savings, people hate change, but I think if we stuck with Waste Management and gave everybody such a big price increase, I think, I think we'd get more complaints in the complaint department than, especially if you had a quote that was this, uh, this attractive.
Man?
To me, it's a change back to Monday delivery, and that, you know, that plus a, a price decrease is attractive.
I do, I am liking the Monday delivery, it's a nightmare, so...
I have a question for you, what kind of negative or positive feedback do you get on food scraps? I mean, I, I'm guessing that, because you have food in the landscape, like the crabs come out and the coyotes come out.
Yeah, so we advertise that we usually can't pass residents to use rigid containers, um, to, the other side of that is depending on the mixture of yard waste and food scraps, if it's more food scrap than yard waste, that can break down that bag, which is already compostable, so when we're already going to pick it up, one of the top half comes off, and then it's still in the parkway, so we actually encourage in, in these contracts to use rigid containers, but, um, in terms of complaints, right, though, the question was, what complaints do we get?
Well, I guess maybe drawbacks is a better word.
Yeah.
But if, I thought you, I thought your company prefers it in the landscape waste bags with theoretically the landscape waste, if you have any.
Yeah, so we...
And I might, I might chime in here, I did check the village code, and we allow food scraps to be mixed with landscape waste, but they have to be in a proper container, which does require essentially the, the rigid container, not the bags.
So, all the weeds go in?
Right, so...
Is that my own container, or a, one purchased from?
So, a rigid container typically is a thirty-five gallon, um...
One of yours?
Gallon can or less, no, it's actually usually a resident-owned container, um, combined with Ace Hardware and...
I see, it's, it's in the language, it's in the language in the packet.
Typically, we have the, traditionally speaking, to, to market as yard waste, a lot of people use it for an acorn or something like that, that indicates it's a yard waste, but, um, food scraps is, have been kind of progressing over the last, you know, five, six years, because compost sites had to be permitted to take it, um, that kind of came in and out, someone failed or someone lost their permit, so now it's a lot more stronger than it was on the infrastructure side, so, um, that's made it a lot easier over the last couple of years to go into a loop.
Hey, can I ask a dumb question? Um, if you use rigid containers, I mean, you put food scraps in there, it's going to smell if you don't clean them, how does that work, right? I mean...
Put them in your question. It's your yard, you deal with it.
Yeah, but I mean, what?
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
It might be in your neighbor's yard.
Yeah, so, no, I just, so seriously, that's the issue, the smell of the stuff in there, I mean, if, if you couldn't put a, like, if it's in a plastic bag, which, you know, whatever, then it seals it all up, and it goes out in the cans relatively clean, unless the bag gets broken, but you, that defeats the whole purpose, right?
Right, because we've got to try to keep it as clean as possible, obviously no plastic, because at the end of the day, the compost site can't, um, use it for a tin product, it kind of defeats the whole purpose, so, um, the quality controls that they have are, are, are pretty strict, um, otherwise they can't market that material on the back end, which is kind of ruins the whole, whole program.
Oh, let's just not yell at anybody.
So, just, just as an effort type on the food scrap program, uh, Chris and I talked to one company, and we had not scheduled to call with the second company, but there are food scrap companies that, um, specifically focus on just that, and their model is very different, they, um, they bring you a clean five-gallon bucket, and then a week later they come back and pick up your dirty crappy bucket, and they leave you with a new clean bucket, and they take all their materials to wherever they process them, and you end up getting a nice clean bucket. Um, it's a subscription service, um, I don't remember actually kind of roughly ballpark what they were charging, but, um, but it's a way to sort of mitigate kind of this disparity between a big company like a Groot or Waste Management trying to process that with a small company that's specifically focused on that, and, uh, the company that we talked to is actually, I think, like a co-op they're calling themselves now, where they're getting a lot more local employees involved, and actually, they, they had like a phenomenally big number of trucks, I think they were saying like, I can't remember, thirty trucks or something like that, which brings...
Sprinter vans or whatever they were, yeah.
Yeah, so, we were, eventually, we wanted to get this moving forward, but then come back to the board with the proposal to implement a voluntary food scrap program as an overlay that says, look, if you want to do this all year long, and you don't want to mess around with putting food scraps in a separate bucket, this is a real good alternative to that for people who are, um, who are committed to that kind of ecological improvement.
They bring in five-year compost, it's even...
Well, okay, so, actually, Swalco has that kind of possible program, if we want to do something like a program with Swalco where some of the mulch would come back, we could set the mulch truck up here in the parking lot and, you know, give away five, five-gallon buckets of compost or something like that, so we could do kind of a program like that with Swalco, and we could exchange people, like, um, some communities do pumpkin smashes, where everybody brings your pumpkins in, we put it in one truck, and then the compost gets doled out into five-gallon or ten-gallon buckets, or a couple of five-gallon buckets for residents, so there's different programs like that that could address that.
I wonder if we could do a pilot program with that?
Oh, the pumpkin thing's going on already, but for us, I mean, obviously, we haven't done anything like that, but we could.
Yeah, or even team up with another village, you know, just...
Yeah, so, yeah, he's looking for motions.
So, so, yes, so, um, I guess the thing is, is, um, what is your, Chris, so, um, if we approve this tonight, what would we be approving, or Vic, um, so that you could complete the contract and, and get it done, would there be any, I mean, would the motion be something like that, provided, we approve it tonight, provided you can work out that clause?
Yeah, actually, we have a resolution in the packet, and it provides essentially what you just said, that we're approving Groot and the contract, so long as the final language can be worked through, um, I, I think that, you know, both in this conversation and in prior reviews, we have identified some issues that still need ironing out, and the, the process would be for essentially Chris to, to give the thumbs up on it, subject to legal review, and if we can't reach it, then it'll be all coming back to the Village Board, but, um, you know, I think that the comments tonight have been aligned with the concerns that had already been identified, and so, uh, I, I think that there's a pretty clear path forward.
So, we're just approving a resolution at this moment, giving themselves to go ahead kind of thing, and you're going to still come back to us after finalizing the legality?
No, no, basically, this is saying, um, given them the ability to go execute the contract, provided they work everything out, uh, but letting, giving them the discretion to work it out based on the feedback we get.
It's, it's on page seventeen, it's fourth package.
Yeah, I don't have it in mind, but, uh, yeah.
Who's making the resolution?
Well, somebody needs to make a motion if somebody wants to do it, and then it will require, um, somebody to second it and...
I'll, I'll make that motion, we need to do this and move forward, I think.
Second.
Okay, so, it was moved by, sorry, it was moved by, uh, Trustee Browski, seconded by Trustee O'Reilly, and that's a roll call. Trustee Browski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Barr?
Aye.
Trustee Tenechi?
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
I'll call you tomorrow, Josh.
Thank you.
Whatever you...
Order some cards, okay?
Okay.
Brown.
Well, just when you have to leave. Uh, no, we have, um, we do have something else we...
Is this famous week?
Oh, no, but we're discussing the capital plan, road paving, I want to be there for that.
Brighter, brighter green.
No, not in that one, but there's my tip review board as well, if you have to leave, you're fine, there's nothing, that's the major one tonight, there, I mean, here.
Thanks, I'm going to...
This is just a discussion.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay. Yes, we just go, just go, all right, all right, uh, yeah, if, you're going to go right now? All right, uh, Trustee Jamil has to leave, so, uh, when... All right, thank you.
Be safe.
Safe. Consideration of the 2025 annual road paving program and capital improvement plan, and I am guessing that the dynamic tool over here, we need to discuss that.
Yes.
Yes, so can I pass it over?
All right. Okay, I was yielding to your direction, so, all right, so, um, you and Mr. Sparkman and I, um, have been talking about, uh, the annual road program for this year, and it's always about this time of year that, uh, a memo of this, uh, nature comes before the board, proposed roads to be resurfaced this year, um, and some preliminary cost, but through the discussion this year, there's a few other, uh, capital projects that, uh, should be considered, you know, or at least part of, uh, the discussion when considering the roads, because a lot of years, the road is, uh, a major capital improvement project, but this year, there's several other ones, so, this memo has, uh, three parts to it for capital projects this year, uh, there's the annual road maintenance, um, program, there's a facilities and land, um, section, and then there's also water distribution, and I'll walk through, um, all of them, and there's a table on page three of the memorandum that, uh, kind of helps summarize this. The annual road maintenance program, um, this is the, kind of the, the song and dance that, uh, we go through at this time every year, um, evaluating the roads and, you know, in, um, consideration of all the 2014 pavement condition study, you know, and what should be resurfaced. Uh, Manager Sparkman and I, uh, drove the roads as well, uh, last month, and, uh, we both agreed far and away, Checker Road from Old Hicks Road to Seventeen Eleven Brookside Lane, uh, is in need of resurfacing, it's actually programmed for, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine in the 2014 pavement condition study, but, uh, it's deteriorated to the point where, um, you, you feel it just a little bit.
There you go.
So, um, Seventeen Eleven Brookside Lane, uh, if you, if you think of Checker Road, uh, at Old Hicks Road, you go east, um, you go past Lincoln and Shenandoah, and there's a curve going north, um, and then you go east a little bit more, and then there's another little curve, so that's right where Seventeen Eleven Brookside Lane is. Um, we got a conceptual cost of that, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, the other part of the annual road maintenance program is the preventative pavement maintenance, which is the Reclamite, and we're proposing to apply those, or, apply that agent to the roads that were resurfaced in 2023. So, we've got a, uh, all-in cost for annual road maintenance, uh, program of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, which is a, a little bit less than, uh, previous years, but, uh, when considering some of the other capital projects, um, that could make sense.
Do you know what percentage it gets us to?
So, uh, yes, I do, um, next page, um, the village is, uh, ten years into the, uh, fifteen-year road paving program, uh, before this year, eighty-four percent of the public roads have been resurfaced, with Checker Road, this length of it, that, uh, increases to eighty-seven percent.
That, that was a good lead-in, right?
Yeah, very good, thank you. Okay, and, uh, so, the other projects that, uh, kind of go with the road paving program is under facilities and land, you've got the Village Hall parking lot, um, as you know, the expansion is going on, and there's been discussion about what's going to happen to the parking lot, and it made sense to over repaving the parking lot until after the heavy construction was done. So, under the facilities and land, there's the, the Village Hall parking lot, and we've got a conceptual cost to resurface the parking lot, uh, just under a hundred thousand dollars, and included in the CIP and in this memo, there's, uh, three optional, um, thing, items that can be included in the Village Hall, um, Village Hall parking lot. One, um, there had been discussion of expanding the parking lot to the west side of Village Hall, um, and, um...
Which is west?
President Jacob, I don't know if you saw an email, but I did email a PDF exhibit of that to you, um, just about fifteen minutes ago.
No, I did not fifteen minutes ago.
Why do you want to... But I said just about, uh, so if you have that, you can pull it up, I, I emailed it to your Long Grove email?
Yep, give me a second, let me...
Yeah.
Would that take out the trees there?
Yeah.
Would you mind the tree?
It would take out the surface, we, we reload, I think there's the one tree there in the flagpole, would have to, it would take out the middle, perhaps the median circle.
And I know there's some memorial trees in there.
We've dedicated a couple of trees out there.
Yes, awesome.
Can I knock it out?
Um, it's under, it's number eight, number twelve, paving program, it's actually number eight.
There we go, okay, is this what you're looking for?
Yep, so you've got the Village Hall, north is up, and then the expansion of the parking lot to the west, um, and that graphic does a, uh, nice job, I suppose, of showing that that Center Island would need to be, uh, paved over, and it would be kind of the, a little bit of expansion on both the east and west side, so...
Okay, so, this over here is, is this expanded over here, this is right there?
Yeah.
Jeff, we're, how do you know it's expanded?
It goes to the new building.
So, oh, the existing parking lot, we were, um, proposing just, uh, one spot expansion on the west side, it's that honeycomb type package.
Oh, right here, just one, okay.
Yeah, so that could be there or not there, um...
But this is all existing right now?
Correct, yep. So, there's...
Handicap would have to move.
Handicap would have to move.
They're currently technically here.
Well, we've moved one tougher early.
They moved one already.
Yeah.
They was dumb to begin with. Doing it a second time, there's no words for it.
Yeah, you got them proposed right here, though, right? Which makes sense.
And then if we did this, we'd rather have to put one more at the main entryway right out front here, where customers come in.
Candidly, why are the handicaps there?
So that's the designed accessible route to get into the boardroom.
There's a ramp?
Yeah, there's a ramp.
There's a ramp right there. Right outside of the new doors, there's the stairs. Yeah, exactly. So...
I personally am not excited about the thought of moving the...
I'm not a fan either. We have, we have, we ask people to park, but we have a lot of parking spots in the school.
That too. I could see doing a bit smaller, but not really. It's part of the look and, and... Some of the dedications that are in there, it would hurt a bit to move them.
The tree, right, yeah.
Well, no, but Betty Coffin's...
Daffodils.
That too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Betty Coffin's what?
The daffodils. They're planted specifically.
Around the, around the, um...
Oh, I see.
Um, so here's a...
And, and there could also be landscaped somewhat to enhance the...
So, dumb question, though, because, you know, we've been parking around the sides, right? So, I mean, it looks like that's kind of almost contemplated here. How many parking spots do we get if we flared it out a little bit, and maybe we took a little bit of the island? But there could be some parking, but not take it all the way out?
I could live with that possibility.
Maybe like parallel parking.
Parallel parking.
Yeah, but full parking around it.
Kind of doing that now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a well-worn path, right?
Yeah, well, if, if there's gonna be a lot of people, I park on the grass too, right, so, yeah. But, um, could we, yeah, could we do that? I don't know what that would bring, how many spots we could get, but right now, there's really technically only like one spot. It's right up there.
So we can look at doing that, you know, there are, you know, there's the wetland and the dry creek, as we've previously talked about, to the north side.
Ditch.
Ditch, exactly.
Better than ditch.
So I can take a look at an exhibit to do that. Obviously, the cost would be much lower than the $125,000 that's in here, and see what we can get and present that to the board before, and for discussion before moving forward with that.
What about between the barn and the...
That's wetland, isn't it?
Or is that septic?
Uh, the, where at on this?
The, the end of this, Margarita's office to, to the barn.
Oh, no, that's where all the new septic equipment is, yeah.
With the larger boardroom, regarding the potentially accommodated crowds, and we need someplace to put the cars that they drive here in. I don't think expanding the parking lot is optional. Now, maybe how we do it, we can discuss. But I don't think what we have now is adequate. How does the school feel about us using their lot? I think we should, we should confirm that we can do that, not assume.
But if you tear all that out, you're only gaining 15 spaces.
Which is, which is almost double our capacity. That's significant to each other.
We have an overflow crowd. It's still not, it's still not adequate.
But, but why if we have a bigger room where we're gonna have more people? I'm not sure if I want to go to the other...
Well, we just had a meeting at the church, didn't we?
Yeah, because we couldn't accommodate.
Okay, there's one.
Well, there's, one of those comes along every five years, this hotel, or whatever, they come along every five years.
Okay, so five times in five years, we'll need more parking, and they can grow up in the school.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know how I really feel about it. I kind of like the idea. I don't want to be that guy, but dedicated trees eventually die. I'm sorry to say that. I hate to say that. So why can't we move dedicated trees or replant dedicated trees? And daffodils could be replanted more properly than just in that circle, which currently is in disrepair. So I don't want to be that guy, because trust me, I love Bob Coffin. I mean, I sat at this table with Bob Coffin, right?
So is that...
I understand. I think I only met her once or twice, actually.
But maybe we'll go.
Um, but I'm, I mean, I think we probably could use some nice parking. I really do. If we could figure out a way to mitigate some of these other concerns.
Does one have to eliminate the other?
No, not necessarily.
In other words, maybe we, I, I knew about this a few days ago, so, we could go. I have the same reaction that Bobby and Ann have, because it adds to the ambiance. It's, it's something different than what other Village Halls have. Some of them, however, make much, much better use of natural wildflowers and things. Ours is worse than that.
It is, it is.
It's a mess.
Yes.
And we talked about, we, we have landscaping in the barn. It's probably not nearly enough. But I could, I could see sharing some of this. You know, you can move those trees, but the, they were planted at the time in their life where it was best time to transplant it so that it would grow and mature and so on and so forth. So if we dig it up five years later, you have less chance of survival from what the arboretum, from what the arboretum is. Okay. So, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way to finagle. Maybe there's a way to take, take some of the green out, but still make it very welcoming. And, you know, it's one of those. We don't need more pervious surface.
Roads don't do much for us.
Okay, it doesn't have to be completely impervious. There's parking systems like they have over in Singapore that are perfectly pervious, right?
And there's like, yeah, Morton Arboretum, super expensive and very high maintenance.
Yeah, but it's Long Grove. We got money.
No, we don't.
We need, no, we don't. We're gonna put, we're gonna spend $600,000 throwing a water pipe to a firehouse, for God's sakes. I mean, we got money.
It's very high maintenance.
Okay, that's fair.
It, it is. Yeah, I had just a short chat with somebody.
Could we, could we, somebody, like, Ginsy, maybe, no, not with Ginsy, but some of our arboretum, ask them to come and take a look at, at this and, and how we can save what we want to save and yet save some parking, probably a couple of trees.
Perfect.
How about the people who sit at this table are CSC or whatever you call it, the Conservancy Corridor Committee? They've expressed an interest to try to use this land around the Village Hall, the new Village Hall, as a way to highlight native plants and, you know, some property. So they should be included.
They could create a whole garden in there.
Yes, yes, that's my point, yeah.
Yes, yes. I have another question.
None of that expands the egress, which is one lane. So we put any more, that, that, as you said, doubles the car, but it's still, you have, we got one lane going across that little creaky thing that's going up to there.
The Village Hall choker.
Yeah, so, we, we, you know, double all of that. Now that said, to the point, we're not gonna have another community church kind of gathering time of the year, I suspect. But I think part of the thought was that was the larger thing, we could make it available to smaller community groups, so... I'm arguing with myself. I don't really like that solution for parking, but I do understand that we will have larger groups in that larger route.
Is there any of this green space that's ours that could be used for that purpose, before you get to the hill?
There's about five feet.
Well, what about right here? Can it be used up here? What about over there? You know, others, I mean, can you look at this a little bit differently?
Yeah. Now, what's our pathway, uh, right now? I was trying to remember, but it was too dark. Our pathway to the, uh...
To the barn?
To the barn.
Right here?
There's a bridge that...
It's a Bob, Bob Borg bridge?
Yes, yes, but what's, what's that pathway made of? It's just nothing right now, or...
There's no graves, and then there's walking stones with crap that they maintain to make it path.
Plus it's wetland, so...
There's just some ditch.
Walking stones.
I would be in favor...
I don't care, but commerce don't so much.
I would be in favor of putting the charging stations, and no, I don't have an EV. I just think it's something we should make available.
Okay, can I play devil's advocate with you on that?
Yeah.
So, so here's the only issue. So first off, whatever we do, we should put the conduit in. Absolutely. Now, the question is, it's gonna be there, it's gonna be on a map somewhere, and somebody's gonna come here and park their car and charge it when we're not here. And how do we handle security?
Okay, let's put the conduit in and make sure that it is actually available for perhaps a private contractor or something like that to help do that, so that, yeah, again, you put the pipes in while we're, while we're capable.
Correct. But I, but how do you handle the security?
Not like we did on Old McHenry.
What?
But not like we did on Old McHenry.
That we didn't do on Old McHenry, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, but we can't, so, I mean, we have pipes in Stumpel Lot, and if you want to add to your list, that's one that we, it's, you know, charge station ready in Stumpel Lot. We put them in there when we did Stumpel. They're there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And if we lease the space instead of we put in the infrastructure?
Oh, yeah, we have, it's private company.
We could bid it out to a contractor at this time, so...
The security issue is my only weird thing about that.
That's fine, fair point. I thought we were gonna put some cameras in anyway, but fair point. I think we should be ready for it and do it at the time when that infrastructure makes sense.
So what's, what's your idea? Somebody's just gonna pull in here, charge their car, walk away? I mean, where are they gonna go?
I don't know. I had this whole thing about, we haven't figured out, we haven't figured out the vandalism yet, so I'm just kind of...
No, I agree with you, I agree with what you're saying.
I was just like, what are you doing?
I don't see the model. I mean, this is a day-use facility. We don't want people parking their cars for overnight charges.
It'll be on a map somewhere. If you own a Tesla.
Right, pull it in.
Yeah, but...
Yeah. Our, our plugs in the parking lot.
I know.
Yeah, they show up on a Tesla map.
Who's gonna call that, the, don't you have to be at...
CSN, correct?
Yeah, CTC, yeah.
Yeah. Somebody call them and, and get them, um, to do what we want them to do. And that's to look at it and come up with some concepts of, of, and maybe even how they could do it.
They're talking about like placarding, the individual planning, so everybody would say, okay, this is good in the name of it, and this is...
Like, like the darn now view, but...
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so...
We've been talking with Jeff Buller there, and he's...
Yes?
Okay, so we have a lot to talk about here at Buller.
Okay.
You've got some direction there on that piece, right? What else do you have?
All right, so Village Hall, Trustee Kritzmeyer mentioned that there's an optional widening of the entrance instead of... So they get two lanes instead of the one lane across the covert over there. So that was the cost, $55,000 to do that widening there, so that's an optional thing for the Village discussion and direction.
Could it be two more parking spaces? I mean, we've gotten along with one and a half width for all these years. If you're gonna make it two lanes, can't...
Well, I can tell you during the turkey trap, people were trying to literally park in the brush. So it was unbelievable. They parked around this whole Village Hall and, uh...
Yeah, well, I can picture it.
And they were actually making it into a parking spot.
Well, maybe we is gate.
I have this question, yeah.
A gate, well, out of it.
Yeah.
I'm being facetious, but, um, you can't protect yourself from everything.
You know, something I thought was actually on Ken's memo. I mean, if we're gonna spend 50-some thousand dollars to widen it, we could take that money and secure the festivals, as Ken's internal memo suggested. You know, with some kind of more permanent barricades prohibiting crazy people driving their car through downtown during a festival. Some of those pop-up barricades, or maybe even hire somebody to figure out a way to keep somebody from crashing into our bridge. Just to your point. Yeah, just to your point. I guess that lane, that one lane bridge here survived for all these years. Sure we get that graphic going.
I think the question is if we're gonna do it at the time that makes the most sense.
Oh, because we got the machines here.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
We could always use Jersey barriers or...
Well, I, I think so too, to a point, but at some point, I mean, we've got a festival every second weekend now.
But we don't have a problem with them parking here during festivals, that I've noticed.
No, they usually don't park up here.
We have a problem with them, with teenagers.
Sure.
So we don't, no.
Yeah, I park here, and I'm usually the only.
And I do too, so I don't lie.
Yeah, because it's too far for the average family to even consider.
Full bridge debris.
So...
We need to get rid of that.
So, so, okay, so let's just get back to, so we had the base bid, if you will, which was the roads that were 582,000, estimated, right? That you want to get permission to go out to bid, and then you want also some other options that could change a little bit to put out to bid, right? Is that what you're looking for today?
Right, looking for direction on the road program and then also the facilities and land, because we would put the Village Hall parking lot as part of the road program because it's the same, you know, paving operations.
Okay.
That'd be the most economical way to do it.
But you don't have a clear approval from the board on the design of the parking lot, so... Yeah.
And let's not hurry it along.
Correct. But, but, so, but there's another part of this, is that you gotta get going early to get to bid with the other villages, right?
Yes, the joint program with...
So, but I have some, so is there a way where, I don't know how you do this, where you can have the, are we in agreement on the top half?
I'm fine with the top half. You said if we use enough E funds, and we have not had a conversation. I assume we would use enough E funds.
Yeah, we have, and we should use them, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's 170 of the last, and it's bringing about 30, you know, typically it's about 360 a year.
But, yeah, so, but you're trying to figure out how, so, I mean, can we give you direction on the first half? Everyone good with, you're gonna come back with the rest, but can you start the dialogue? I mean, I'm assuming everyone has no issues with talking to our neighbors, you know, still there, bidding together. I mean, it's only one time where I think it costs us more, but, um...
Yeah, historically, Long Grove has been a beneficiary of...
Beneficiary of joint bidding, right? So, but then I don't know how you do this midsection where it's swish cheese right now, right?
Yeah, I think about the EV, you know, we're just gonna pipe it.
Mm-hmm.
Probably do the back tube for the current handicap art, because they're right by the commed, right down here.
Yep.
The commed transmitter right there, transformer. But, yeah, the, that whole part, we don't know.
There's well, there's the entrance and the rest of the road that we're covering.
But I would suggest that, you know, we include, you know, moving forward, you know, resurfacing the parking lot the way that it is, it gets a price on that, and then we can, the, you know, the Village always has the option of doing or not doing after the bids are received. So just throwing that out there, you know, the timing part, and to Bobby's point, you know, not rushing this. But, you know, we can, you know, use that, you know, as the place where we get the prices, and then kind of on the side, if you will, you know, work through this expansion part. Or, you know, what we want to do for more parking to the west, you know, see a little bit more detail on widening the access, things like that.
Are you including the little paths and the access route in the 55,000? Because I, I am fine with keeping the way it is.
Okay. Yeah, and if that's...
Is it over here where the little bridge is? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
We're talking right here, yeah.
As you drive in.
Yeah, as you drive in over there.
Yeah.
There on the path.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let me just tell you, if, so the killer on this will be, to widen it, do we have to take a tree out?
That's...
So that answers it from here right there.
Okay.
Whether it's a junk tree, are any of them junk trees?
Probably.
Well, there's young trees to the west side, you know, to the east side, that's a really nice tree.
On this side right here?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah, those are the branches right there.
Oh, that, oh, these are the branches, okay.
Big tree.
Oh, so we might have space over here, you're saying?
Uh, it's actually just a little bit off that page, but yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think it's time to do contact, don't stay in the corridor, residents, and happen, and it was saying...
Sure.
Jeff, you wanna talk about the access drive?
Yep, that was next. Okay, so the next thing on facilities and land is the Village Hall access drive. It's not, not a road, because it's not right of way, but the Village has an easement from, you know, the one... has an easement from, you know, the one-lane entrance into the Village Hall, all the way up to Old McHenry Road. Uh, school district property, but, and Vic could, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the village has some obligation to maintain that, and that had been previously discussed with the village as part of, um, or, not with the village, but with the school district, excuse me, uh, as part of their approval to allow construction access, uh, for the Village Hall project.
Right, we have, as part of our purchase of the Village Hall, back in the, I wanna say, early nineties, a twenty-foot easement that takes it all along the north, early end of the school property, but our obligation is to maintain it. Um, when we were undertaking the planning for the Village Hall project, there were meetings with the school, and the village reiterated that, uh, the obligation to maintain is there, and that, uh, the likely timeline of that would be coordinated with the completion of the construction. So, we are gonna have to ensure that upon completion, uh, to the extent there's been degradation of that, uh, of that easement, that we, uh, improve it to, to be, you know, appropriate for, for utilization.
Are you saying we are morally or legally obligated?
Uh, we certainly are legally, but morally, I'll leave that up to everyone else, but, uh, legally, we have that obligation.
Starting to get a little crackly.
So, the question, so, you know, is there any reason we wouldn't do it though here?
Do you have a quote for that, or no?
Uh, we put a budget number in there for this, forty thousand.
Forty-two.
Forty, yeah.
Forty-two.
And that's just to do, uh, like, a two-inch grind and mill and...
Mill and overlay, yeah.
You should put that in there, by my opinion, but...
That, that's, like, that should be a definite answer.
Okay, okay. Uh, the next thing on the facilities and land, probably something that can, um, uh, have some further discussion later, but in the Archer parking lot, it, there's, uh, landscaped islands that flood regularly, and, uh, it just happened, what, a week and a half ago?
Yeah.
Snow melt?
It was an ice rink, the, the parking lot turned into an ice rink, and we had to have, um, lesters come out and break the ice up and get a pump and drain the water into the...
You finally get an ice rink, and you broke it up, right? Seriously, wow.
So, the village has been, um, using that approach over the last five, ten years, probably, when it happens, that, you know, pump it out, or get the township out here to jet the pipes, 'cause what happens is the storm drains in there, the mulch runs into them and things like that. Um, the design, not quite, uh, the way bio swales are designed nowadays, uh, there's no underdrain or things like that in there. So, we put a placeholder in here to add a hundred thousand dollars to redo the drainage in there, um, at those storm inlets, which is kind of the east side of those bio swales, if you will.
Bio swale?
A bio swale, yeah, is, um, an earthen swale, but instead of having grass in it, you put natives in it, native plantings, and you also put more, uh, engineered soil in there and deep-rooted plants to help absorb the water. So, not, all of the runoff goes into the storm drain, which, in this case, goes into Three Lakes, but you've got, uh, deep-rooted plants that, uh, absorb some of that and recharge it into the groundwater.
So, the intent is that the water should flow into it?
Yep.
Or flow, it, it shouldn't be a mound that wants from it to go to it?
Correct, yep.
I can't...
But not cattails, because those aren't made there.
I know, Jim.
Yeah, so, um, this would not...
These little guys in there?
So...
Um, yeah, the, in there, correct. So, I can provide some more detail on that. This would not be something that would be bid with the road program anyway, because it's, uh, specialty work and not paving, you know, um, but something that, um, uh, manager Sparkman and I have talked about addressing this year.
Okay.
Uh, and then the last thing is just a recap of the two water projects that, uh, have been discussed and, um, are ongoing with the design of them. First is the Lake Michigan Water Connection Buffalo Grove system, the second is the water extension on Aptikisic Road. Um, I mean, it's primarily being done for the fire department at this point, but it's the leg of the water system that's, um, going to be needed to extend and bring service to future development at Valley Bunyan, Omen, and also up into, um, the existing Briar Crest subdivision. So, those, those projects are also in here. Um, kind of in there, um, down a few lines in the table, you get, um, plus the federal funding that the village has received, um, for, a grant for from, from the Lake Michigan Water Connection, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, and then, um, the fire department, um, agreement is being made for them to fund the water extension on Aptikisic Road, so that's the seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred. Again, I say, the agreement's being drafted, it's not signed or anything like that, but, uh, that is, uh, all the discussions the village has had with the fire department, to my knowledge, to do that.
Can I just kinda go back to Archer?
Yep.
I guess they're contemplating doing some work out there, does it make sense to put Bobby's walkway in at the same time? You guys got your equipment out at Archer? Is that totally different equipment?
Uh, it would be different equipment, the, the drainage work, you know, that'll be, you know, like a Lester's or a Millu or something like that, uh, whereas the paving, you know, if we wanted to move forward, if the, if the village wanted to move forward with that, include that with the actual road program itself, um, because you'll have a, a paving contractor there.
I can't remember what a ballpark estimate was on that little pathway.
Seventeen, I think.
Seventeen, twelve?
I said fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen, relative to anything else we do, this miniscule.
I have no issues with, somebody wants to put that in there, so...
Well, if, if you, if y'all kept track of how often I and people in that area cannot get into their offices or in their stores, then there's no, no parking.
Yep.
Who's taking us, there's an amount of children.
If there's, if the village wants to give me direction, we can add that in there.
I, I direct you.
All right, I think, I heard Chris, yeah.
All right, I, yeah, messing with, let us mess with it, right?
All right.
Got it.
But I think you have another...
Okay, so I think I, uh, got the direction to move forward with the pro, road program, and then, uh, with the things we talked about.
So, the six hundred and fifty K that's fully reimbursable by the fire department? Or whatever that number is, six fifty-two?
For the...
It would be, yeah, six K.
Although it looks like the reimbursement is about a hundred and thirty-six thousand more than that.
Well, there's...
I'm not sure about that.
Uh, the, uh, soft costs are in there too, yep.
Yeah.
That's interesting, how hard to take that.
What's your question, Chris? Did it get answered?
Well, no, I just wanna make sure it's, it's fully reimbursed, because, and for seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna buy a water truck and I'll deliver a wa, truckload of water there for a hell of a lot cheaper than seven hundred and fifty-two.
Chris is retired now, so he's...
You know, I'm telling you, we had water issues in Arizona, I mean, that middle of that, that water issue debacle out there, and, you know, right now, worst case, you're paying like thirteen cents a gallon right now for water, delivered in the middle of the, how much water that is? It's a hell of a lot of water.
Thirteen cents per gallon?
Yeah, which is high, but...
It is high.
It is high, but even so, man, a million dollars, it's a lot of freaking water at thirteen cents, you know? Man.
Um, I, sorry, I get the direction I needed.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna discuss anything further, happy to do so.
So, Jeff, on the main, the main, the main water, um, connection, I know you mentioned Briar, Dale, Briar Crest.
Briar Crest.
But do we know, like, what the actual capacity is of that connection going forward, and who actually would be entitled to maybe possibly in the future, seriously, connect to it? I mean, I know Briar, Dale, Briar Crest, 'cause they've got their common, their, uh, common wells, right?
Yep.
But, but after that, if the village is spending a million dollars on this thing, who else is getting benefit out of, out of it beside that relatively limited customer base?
And is there a recapture?
The new subdivision?
Anything commercial that has something with Valley Bunyan area? Anything that goes between the Valley Bunyan and the fire station?
No. Where is the guy that, at the...
Um, the Joe Dudley guy?
He, wait, last I talked to him, in December, to close on the property, hopefully, end of January.
So, do we have, like, an estimated property count, or do we have an estimated demand usage?
Well, so, there was a workshop, and we probably need to do it again, where some of us made it...
I missed it, I missed it.
Yeah, you were in Arizona, I think, so we probably need to resurrect that, 'cause, uh, there was a lot of work that went into it. Um, and I don't know if it's easily accessible. We can't do it tonight, but I'm easily accessible to make it available to everyone, 'cause we kinda looked at all the options, right?
Okay, 'cause again, a million dollars is a crap load of money in my book.
Right.
You do a lot with a million dollars.
What's the problem, though, Chris? We have the water, we need customers.
Also, we have to buy a radium...
Or, I understand, I understand some of that.
Radium mitigation, which ultimately costs us more than doing this with Lake Michigan.
I know you do, yeah.
Sorry?
I know you do.
I don't, I understa, no, I'm not always smart, I forget, I forget all that stuff.
No, you're smart.
I understand the radium issue, million dollars, still a whole crap load of money. I don't know why the village of Long Grove is even in the water business, for such a relatively small fraction of the residents who actually live here. And to me, that, that disparity is a conflict. I mean, we're a residential community, but we're gonna spend a million dollars on a water connection that's gonna service just this little microscopic section of town. To me, that's, to me, that, I, I struggle with that, I really, really do. I get the, I get the radium, radium mitigation, but...
Yeah.
Why are we even in the water business?
The problem is, we're in it, and we can't get out of it.
It is not, it is not a two-way street. It, no, we, you will invite all kinds of circuits. It's not a two-way street.
But, but again, it gets back to the north of twenty-two, south of twenty-two debate. How's this helping north of twenty-two? I, I, I don't get it. I don't know why I'd spend a million dollars here, I could spend a million dollars on a pathway of down to Lake Road that actually connects people and does something for the greater whole of the community. But I, I really struggle with the mil, I, I struggle with the million dollars, I'm gonna shut up.
I, I just wanna say, Chris, um, I like questions. I think questions are good, and, and, and nobody should criticize anybody for asking even dumb questions, 'cause I've got dumb questions too, and it's, so I'm...
Not the night I agreed with most of yours, son.
Well, yeah, that's good, maybe you...
I did.
But I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear, million dollars, you know?
Yeah, it's real money.
It's, it's real money.
Certainly, I could pull a truck off it.
Well, the short answer is, if we don't spend a million on Lake Michigan, we're gonna spend more than a million, and it'll keep going year after year after year with the existing system. It's actually cheaper to get Lake Michigan water, that's assuming you're staying in the water business, which we are, 'cause we really have no choice.
Yeah, I, I, I don't need to criticize, I just, it is, it is not a decision we can reverse easily at all. You didn't make that decision, I didn't make that, but it is, it is one that we have.
Why, why do we say that? Why can't we sell that facility to an operator?
Who would buy it?
I don't know, somebody, somebody who can make more than thirteen cents.
They wouldn't want it any more than we want it.
The take, the take.
I, I don't, I mean, have we, have we shopped it? Have we tried to sell that facility? Get out of the water business? Have we thought about it? Have we been in the market?
Hawthorne Woods, I don't know if you're aware of, they contract, they sold their service to Aqua, and it was managed into the ground to the point where residents had to go without water for a month.
Right, it was...
And right now, they're trying to buy their way back out of it.
Yeah, we have multiple bad options, and we're choosing the least bad of the bad options. Well, I, I would say that we probably need to do the refresh of that workshop, bring everyone together, find a time for that later, so...
Is there an issue with future allocation potential that we could, could you have the roster table?
Well, who can answer that? Vic, did you hear the allocation question?
We still maintain that.
We have, we have our, um, water allocation, right?
Correct, we do have a water allocation. There is a, a risk of use it or lose it. Right now, the primary, the village is using its allocation in part, but that's through Heron's Landing, and that is, while currently credited to the village, once the special service area is paid off, uh, that system is conveyed to Lake County, and with that, the, the utilization from an allocation perspective also will go to Lake County. So, um, we'll go from whatever the, the utilization is in Heron's Landing to zero, uh, after that transfer occurs, unless we get Lake Michigan water through the Buffalo Grove, uh, interconnect.
All right, so we should, um, try to get a workshop and do that again, and just bring everyone up to speed. And it's a quarter to nine. Um, can we move a little bit? Be good for now? Um, we have two other items on the agenda that, um, require votes, um, and they are consideration of resolution regarding the joint downtown Rodney Three Tiff District and the South Gateway Tiff. Um, does anyone wanna know more about that, or does somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
Just since we're gonna do a meeting, and we haven't had a, got a date.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, right, but should we have, since trustee Kritzmeyer is not gonna be here next year, should we have somebody else be a co-chair to that, or participate in that, and maybe be your future appointee, or does it need to pick up that?
It's not a big deal, and if, if you like, if you like the continuity, you can make me the resident next year, so...
Okay, I'm glad you can get through that, okay.
Yeah.
I just saw your name on there, and oh, man, if you're not here next year, I'm gonna lose you.
It's not a dime a year.
No, no, I mean, she runs the meeting, um, so, she does it very well, by the way, I'm sure.
Usually, you invite all the taxing bodies that are affected by the Tiff District, usually one comes, usually it's a different one every year, seriously.
Yeah, we missed last year, so we have, this is catch-up. And I, Vic, is this gonna cover two years when we do it too?
Um, it, it will cover two years. Uh, we are circulating the, um, the annual reports from the beginning of time for the South Gateway, um, you know, that's the one out by Menards, that doesn't include Menards. Um, but my guess is that, especially since Ann has been through this routine, absent any, uh, I will say, off-topic comments or questions, and we've had those in the past, uh, this is likely to be a half-hour meeting. Ann, you, do you think otherwise?
No, I completely agree, and if we get, you know, we've had a couple of off-topic, to your point, that's fine, I'll, I, I got no problem with those.
Yeah.
So, you need a motion to approve?
We do, yeah.
Very good, so move.
By trustee Barowski, seconded by...
Second.
Second by, uh, trustee, uh, O'Connor, thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
I'll get the next one.
You're okay, fair.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, this, this one I think would be ru, routine too, but, um, this is consideration in order in cementing the Village Hall liquor licenses to allow a classy, uh, application from two twenty-five Robert Parker Puffin Road Cafe. They've been getting licenses during the festivals, and now they decided that they wanna get a, a permanent license to serve alcohol.
Sure, sure, sure.
By trustee O'Reilly, seconded, by trustee Tanucci, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
As I stated before, I enjoy a cocktail, aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, now, we had our engineer's report, but, uh, we love you so much, Jeff, we have a second one, but if you could keep it really short, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so, um, engineer's reports in the packet, I'm just going to highlight four things. Uh, first, the Village Hall expansion is, uh, under construction, going relatively smoothly. We've got a, uh, coordination meeting tomorrow morning, and if there's, uh, any, uh, views after that, I'm sure the village manager will share that. Um, pathway study, as, uh, Trusty O'Connor mentioned, I've got a very riveting update on that, that we, Trusty O'Connor and I and the pathway committee will find a time in February to move the village's pathway, uh, study and plan forward that was approved, uh, many, many moons ago.
This is what Mark's been waiting for, that's why you're still here.
(laughing) I've been waiting the whole time, yeah.
Sorry, didn't have more.
That was it?
Oh, my God.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, the Lake Michigan Water Connection, um, Long Grove and Buffalo Grove's, uh, legal teams are going back and forth on the IGA on that. Um, and then, the last thing on that was the grant application, we're working with the EPA to, you know, get all the i's dotted and t's crossed on that, because there's a couple other things that they've asked for in the last few weeks. Um, the last thing is, there's a lot of, uh, different updates on the permit form of, section of this, so, a lot of those are recommending closeout. I mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, we made an effort in late November, early December to try to get that list, uh, a little bit shortened up, so... So, I, I ha- don't have to look through it every two weeks and wonder where everybody's at. So, that, uh, in the report, unless there's any questions.
All right, and a report, um, both president and trustee reports, the only thing I'm going to say is that it's a 228 meeting, which is the next meeting, I'm not able to attend. I could attend on Monday, if you want to move it to Monday, I can be there. But if somebody wants to take my spot and run the meeting, uh, please let me know, and we'll keep you updated, so, want to do it?
It's on Monday.
It's on Monday?
Either one's okay, yeah.
I don't care.
You don't care? Well, you guys tell me if you...
228, you said, February.
128.
Uh, I'm sorry, 128, I...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 128.
Two weeks would be Monday, but it's, uh, sorry.
Monday.
Monday, we're...
I'm going either way, either way's good.
So, if you were, if you're okay to move it to Monday, then we'll move it to Monday, then?
I would only stay till 3:30.
Okay, that's fine, well, we'll try to...
I've got to, I've got to run full day work.
Okay. All right, I'll be here, because, yeah, I can't, I have to be in Las Vegas for the...
So, moving it to 27th, then, or not?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Send out a note.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Do it tomorrow.
Trusty Barowski.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Uh, Trusty Kritzmeyer. Trusty O'Connor.
End of report.
Oh, jeez, Trusty O'Reilly.
I only have one thing, and, and we've bounced around, and ten's going to know doubt to all of us. And, and I responded, and, and haven't heard another word about it. And I think we need to pursue what he suggested, and that we, we as the board need to know what staff is doing, what the, uh, town is doing, and I think that this may apply to other parts of the village, too. As we, we, as board members, need to know what we should be doing for worst-case security.
Oh, yeah.
And we're here suggesting, um, a, a refresh on the water. Let's add this as a discussion item, um, we don't need to bring professionals in and, and, and all of that, but we need to talk about what we can do and should be doing, because as, as we can hear from California, they've been sitting on their asses for a long, long time, not doing what they should be doing, and they are at fault, and I don't want to see us being at fault, and we've been lucky for a while.
Yep, I agree with you, one of my worst fears, so...
So, if we can combine those subjects, um, to the same thing, I think...
Ah, okay.
Would be a great idea.
All right, thank you, I agree.
You know, that may want to think about concluding Lake County Sheriff, too.
Yeah.
We know they've got emergency plans, but we...
They have to record that.
We still have not seen them, so, I don't, you know, we've had that discussion with them several times, actually, about...
Yep.
Their response.
Yep, I hear you. Okay, Trusty Tanucci, you're next, was that your... Nothing else to add. Okay, okay, perfect. Um, village manager's report.
Uh, nothing, other than I'll just say, um, Lieutenant Kaiser and I have been working on rolling out a security plan for downtown festivals, it's just in draft form, so, hasn't...
But, but my, don't miss my point, it's fine that you're doing it, it's fine that Phil does it, we need to do it.
Yep, yeah, I hear you, I want to have a...
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't want to, you know, come up to an, an evening, and by 8 o'clock, you already through the security system. I, that I don't want, I want us to raise our physical, because I think that seven heads are better than one.
I'm interested in physical barriers.
Yeah, that's...
All right, um, there's no reason to go to executive session?
Unless we want to talk about...
The tables.
The festival.
Card tables?
(laughing) Cut some logstouts.
I don't know, I mean, I, I think we should just adjourn. Unless you want to, you want to go to executive session?
Yeah, be bolder.
Anyone want to go to executive session? Nope, okay, I need a... I just posted an email earlier. All right, I, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, so, by Trusty O'Reilly, second, and by Trusty O'Connor, all in favor? All right, all right, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Thanks for the meeting.
Thank you, Vic.
Night, all, thank you. And, and Bill, thank you for your accommodation tonight.
Oh, I feel much better already.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think I coughed once, so that's a good thing, but, uh, who knows what's, what's, what's in store.
Hope, hope your daughters get better.
Yeah, thank you, all right, good night, everyone.
All right, thanks, Vic, yeah, thanks, bye.